Welcome to the second meeting of the Honolulu Legal Commission. If you're appearing before the commission today, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your names for our commission's reporter. And if you're going to testify on any matter on the agenda, please introduce yourself, spell your name, and come forward and be sworn in by Ms. Arai. With that being said, commissioners, we'll move into the public hearing. Calling agenda item number one, application number two zero dash two zero three five one, Makaha Minimart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. We don't expect the applicant to appear at the public hearing. You may recall that at the July 2nd meeting, that the same applicant was granted a standalone temporary retail general license. This is one of the unfortunate situations with, due to the COVID-19 closure, the transfer of the licenses will not be able to be completed. However, to avoid impacting the new application that is going forward with the same principles, I'm going to recommend that the commission keep the public hearing open and take the matter under advisement. And that will allow us to take it off the agenda but not impact the new application that is going forward.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Arai. Commissioners?
We'll take the matter under advisement, Chair.
And public kept open.
Public can kept open.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one will be taken under advisement and the public hearing will be remain open. Calling agenda item number two. This is a preliminary hearing. Yes, calling the applicant, please. Agenda item number two, application number two zero dash two one three one four, Best Bridal Hawaii, Inc.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Neil Gota, appearing on behalf of Best Bridal Hawaii, Inc. To my right is John Nelson, the manager. We have no case in this investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Gota, on page three of the investigation report, there's a heading in the bottom called "kind of business," and it indicates that proposed premises are not going to be open to the public. I'm just wondering if you can comment on what's the intent there?
So what this business is, it's a wedding, sort of, a wedding business where customers can purchase a wedding package. And so it's part of that they would be selling liquor retail to the customer. So it's not generally going to be open to walk-in public customers, but anyone purchasing the wedding package could potentially purchase liquor for off-premise consumption with that package.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve application number two zero dash two one three one four.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number two zero dash two one three one four is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Calling agenda item number three, application number two zero dash two one eight one eight, Olive Alamoana LLC, Mr. Gota, Mr. Nikoba, I'm sorry.
Give me chair. Due to a conflict, I'm going to have to use some different.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Can you hold offer a minute?
Not a problem.
Thank you. Please proceed. Please proceed. Proceed, Mr. Nikoba.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Devin Nikoba representing Olive Garden. To my right is Vincent Spino. He is the owner of Olive Garden. To my left, Shani Yamara. She's one of the workers.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I'm sorry, we have no changes to the report.
That's fine.
Motion to approve application number two zero dash two one eight one eight.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number two zero dash two one eight one eight is approved. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Can we have Commissioner Lee back, please? Thank you. Calling agenda item number four, application number two zero dash two one nine zero four, TBB Holden's, Inc. Mr. Zima Kalam.
Hello, Chair. Vice Chair members of the commission, Ms. Arai, Emmanuel Zima Kalam here on behalf of TBB Holden's, DBA Teddy Digger Burgers. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two zero dash two one nine zero four.
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number two zero dash two one nine zero four is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself and spell your name, please.
Okay, this is Saki Yamamoto from the Waikiki Partners LLC, the DBA Seto Kober. And he's the manager, Tadashi Yamamoto, but he can't speak English, so I, I'm going to speak. Here, and then, we are in Waikiki Yokocho. It's a food alley. We had one of the restaurant in Waikiki Yokocho, and Waikiki Yokocho decided to close this end of the month, but maybe building owner might take over their, our business, but we are not sure we can reopen it or not, so we want to ask you guys to suspend our license for a while. We are not sure to when.
Is your license in safekeeping?
Sorry?
Have you brought your license to put into safekeeping with the commission?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Just to clarify, I don't believe that this licensee has renewed for the FY '21 year. You've not renewed the license yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so I believe that what they're asking to do is something similar to what happened with Outrigger Truck Seller like last week. I believe, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, that you want to keep the license alive, but leave it in safekeeping because you don't know what you're going to, if you're going to reopen or what you're going to do.
Yes.
Okay, so, that's a mouthful, but.
So how would we?
I think the motion would be to approve the late renewal of the license and placement in immediate safekeeping without necessity of payment of the license renewal fee. So moved.
Do you have a motion for the waiver fee or suspension of fee?
Well, I sort of grouped it all together, so the, there's three parts with it. One is the, they're renewing beyond June 30th, so that they need permission to late renew, immediate placement into safekeeping, that's two, and the third one is without the necessity of paying the applicable license fee at this, until pickup. Yeah, until pickup.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Saman. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anna?
Yes, ma'am.
Where is the prosecutor going to sit?
She sits actually there facing us.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the licensee and representative will stand behind the stanchion, and we'll just, this is the first time we're doing this, so we're obviously made for the week.
So let me just ask, Daniel, do we have the six P?
We have previously measured that. I know it's pretty close, but, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure of that. Okay, so let's call, let's move into the adjudication hearing agenda item number six, Bevy LLC.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the commission, Neil Otiana, on behalf of licensee, also present is Christian Self, who's a member.
Good afternoon, Catherine Nesty, Deputy Corporation Counsel.
And at this time, we're going to waive reading of the charges and throw the of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda item number seven, six, excuse me, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Nesty, your recommendation?
This is a first violation. Liquor was open and readily consumable on the licensed premises after hours, specifically at 2:32 a.m., so the recommended fine is $820.
Ms. Otiana?
Yes, so the way that my client explains it is that they were cleaning up for the night, the doors were closed, there were no customers inside of the licensed premises at the time. One of their cleaning procedures is that they remove everything from the beverage refrigerator under the bar in order to wipe down the inside of the refrigerator, and that bottle came from that refrigerator. The bartender had taken it out and placed it on the bar top in order to wipe down the inside of the refrigerator, and that's when the investigators came in for the inspection and saw the open container on the bar top.
Ms. Nesty, any response?
One of the other deputies in our office had contacted one of the investigators to follow up on the matter. It appeared from his response in an email that, it didn't appear to him that there was a cleanup happening, and it appeared that it was being consumed on the premises.
Can I ask a clarification from Ms. Otiana?
Yes.
As you described the cleanup, the bottle or container was taken out of the refrigerator and put on the counter? Was it open or closed?
Yes. It was open. It had been used that evening for cooking purposes, for a dish that they had prepared that evening, so that was a bottle that was being used by the kitchen, and it was kept behind the bar in the refrigerator.
So it was stored in the refrigerator, open as well?
Yes.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
If I could just add, I think in the correspondence between the deputy and the investigator.
I'm sorry, at this point, I'm going to object to any correspondence being read into the record that's not part of the report. There's no testimony or evidence being taken because we've entered a no contest plea, so I think any extrinsic evidence outside of the report is irrelevant and not necessary at this point.
Well, we're not in a contested hearing right now, so I'll hear out the prosecutor.
It was just noted that the kitchen is not in the vicinity of the bar counter, it's across the room, so.
And has your client been advised as to why the violation was issued?
Yes.
And what would be a more appropriate way to prevent a violation from occurring again?
I was a little hesitant to really provide him any instructions as to how to avoid this particular violation. He does understand, you know, that liquor can't be out after hours, but in order to clean that fridge, they have to pull everything out. So in order, you know, when he asked me how can he, he can avoid this in the future, I really have very few suggestions other than to put the bottles on the floor, which is not sanitary. You know, the only suggestion that I have is really to maybe have some kind of box or some, some other sort of cumbersome way of storing the items while they're cleaning the fridge. He's been in business for a very, very long time and has never had an incident like this before, so I don't think it'll be a repeating issue.
Well, that's why I'm asking. I'm looking to give you a break on this, but if it's gonna, if our investigators are going to keep coming and keep finding the same violation, I don't, I don't want to keep going down that path, so.
I mean.
What's going to be the resolution to prevent this from happening?
May I speak?
I'm sure you can come in.
Yeah, thank you.
Introduce yourself for the record, please.
Hi, Christian Self, a member of Bevy LLC. The substantive question that my counsel is trying to describe to you is the bottle got opened by mistake during service that evening, and it was placed in the refrigerator. It's an item that we do use in our kitchen. We use a head of wizen to make our head of wizen for our mussels that was on the menu at that time. During the breakdown, the bartenders, at my direction, you know, they clean everything from top to toe, and they do, they have to remove everything out from the refrigerator. The bartender in question put the beer on top of the counter, so then move it into the walk-in for the kitchen to use the next day. We haven't had any other issues like this before, and again, my instructions to them is if we have this issue again, we have a bottle opened up by mistake, and we do transfer it into the kitchen for cooking use, either be it spoiled wine or other things like that, and immediately goes into the kitchen and gets put into their locker and area.
Okay, thank you. My motion is to issue a letter of reprimand. Please don't let this happen again.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six, a letter of reprimand will be issued.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number nine, Club 939.
Good afternoon, Stuart Shirasu, S.T.E.W.A.R.T.S.H.I.R.A.S.U.
Deputy Corporation Counsel Catherine Nesty.
Oh, we plead no contest with explanation.
I'm sorry, can you read the charge? Or ask him to waive?
Do you want me to read the charges?
No, I, I, do you want me to go ahead and read them or do I? In this case, there are three violations. Charge number one, on or about February 3rd, 2019, licensee failed to have a time card or other adequate record showing in English the month, day, year, and time indicating AM or PM, and the legal first name and surname of its employee, Lauren L. O'Rourke, when that employee was on duty in violation of Rule 3-82-38.4A. Charge number two, on or about February 3rd, 2019, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee employed Lauren L. O'Rourke in that section of the licensed premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed without said employee being properly registered with the liquor commission in violation of Rule 3-82-38.5. And charge number three, on or about February 3rd, 2019, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee employed Lauren L. O'Rourke as a dancer in that section of the licensed premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed without said dancer being properly registered with the liquor commission as required under Rules 3-82-38.4 and 3-82-38.5.
Now, sir, how would you like to plead as to charges one, two, and three?
I plead no contest with explanation, please.
Motion to accept a no contest plea for charges one, two, and three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, our charge number one, the no contest plea is accepted, and charge number two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Nesty, what's your recommendation for penalty?
As for charge number one, it's a first violation with a recommended fine of $250. As for charge number two, it's also a first violation with a recommended fine of $350. And as for charge number three, this is a second violation, the first one having occurred on 9/30/17, the recommended fine is $750.
Show your explanation, please.
Yes, this is a employee who had returned from a trip, and she didn't have her cards, and the person, manager on duty, allowed her to work that, I think it was a Friday or Saturday, and was just told her to go get her cards. So she did get her cards on Monday, and she is registered and in compliance now, and we did speak with the manager on duty about that, but it's just, you know, difficult when she arrives on a weekend and it's closed, and it's difficult for her to get her card, and they just wanted to work, that's all. But we understand the severity of it, and she was, she did get her cards. If possible, can I also make a statement too?
I'm sorry?
Could I also add a statement as well, for the record?
Go ahead.
Okay. There, so far during COVID, there have been no cases traced back to bars. We've been doing our very best to follow the guidelines set forth by the state. We also support the Department of Health going and, going and creating, creating a system to look for violators, but we do feel it's unfair if all bars are closed, so we would hope that the liquor commission stands firm and allows us to stay open as long as we continue to follow the guidelines set forth by the state.
Thank you.
Let me just make a statement. We appreciate that statement. It's going, it's going to be up to you guys.
Well, we're doing our best, but we're one bar.
Thank you very much.
Among, you know, many, and I do know there are some violators, so, you know.
Motion to approve the recommended fine for charge one of $250, a recommended fine of $350 for charge two, and the recommended fine of $750 for charge three, for a total of $1,350.
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, agenda item number seven, the recommended fine for charge number one, two, and three are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number six, Choga Jip.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. My far right is Jang Soon Lim. He's the manager of the premises. All these matters, we're only on eight, but eight, nine, and 10 are for penalty phase only.
Catherine Nesty, Deputy Corporation Counsel.
This is only for penalty phase, or Mr. Kyuchi?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Nesty, what's your recommendation for agenda eight?
The charge was for permitting liquor to be open and readily consumable on the licensed premises. The time was approximately 2:17 a.m. This is a first violation with a recommended fine of $670.
Seventy, seven zero?
Seven zero.
Thank you. Mr. Kyuchi?
So my explanation for all three items are going to be similar. After the third violation, which is number 10, I had a meeting with the client, so to explain the restaurant, the restaurant has a restaurant component and a karaoke bar. The restaurant is actually open even after 2:00, which isn't unusual for a Korean restaurant. Sorbo, for example, is open till 5, 6 o'clock. My client's restaurant is open on the restaurant side till 5:00 a.m. And obviously, that in and of itself presents a lot of problems. So after the last violation, the one that's number 10, I met with my clients, and what they are now doing is totally shutting down the karaoke bar. They have shut down the karaoke bar about 1:30 in the morning since the last violation, which since about March of 2019. The restaurant side is still open, but obviously, they're not serving alcohol on the restaurant side. All of these violations occurred in the karaoke side specifically in the bar. In all three cases, the alcohol was in a cup, so we can't say that it was in a, in a bottle or that they forgot to clear it off, so, which is why I met with my client, explained to them what I think they needed to do to alleviate going forward. Since the onset of COVID, they shut down the karaoke side at 10 o'clock at night, so in the future, they should not have any violations because I think that's the biggest concern.
Okay, so this is an issue of drinks from the karaoke bar being taken over to the restaurant?
Well, actually, what happened is that there's a tendency in the karaoke bar for people to be served before 2:00 and not cleared off, so this was in the bar area of the karaoke, not in the rooms. And that's why I explained to my client, you gotta stop serving it a whole lot earlier, and you gotta just close the whole place off, which they'd done.
Is it your client's practice to serve alcohol when, before 2:00 a.m. in cups?
It was until I met with them. I mean, they would serve before 2:00, they would sometimes have cups, sometimes they would have beer. All of this was beer. I don't know specifically why there was, why there were cups, but in all three instances, there were cups.
Just that cup suggests to me that there's some awareness that they are doing something improper after service hours are supposed to be completed and putting their cup instead of consuming from a bottle or a can.
Well, and I think that's a good point, and that's why just cutting off service at, it totally in the karaoke bar would, I think is the remedy, so we don't even address the issue.
Ms. Nesty, you have any response?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $670.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item eight, the recommended fine is approved. Calling agenda item number nine.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair members of the commission, Keith Kyuchi.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
Fat fingers. Fat fingers are turning the page, right? Please let me allow it. Agenda item number nine, Choga Jip. Mr. Kyuchi.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. My far right is Jang Soon Lim, who is the manager. This is also for penalty phase. The explanation is pretty similar, so.
Ms. Nesty, your recommendation?
Again, this is the first violation. Liquor was open and readily consumable at approximately 2:20 a.m. The recommended fine is $700.
Okay, and this was on June 23rd?
2018.
The last one was April 2018. Okay, so.
Just made it.
Yep.
Just made it.
So Mr. Kyuchi, same explanation, that they were?
Yes, and.
Just leaving out stuff or serving after and not knowing? What's the deal?
Well, in, you know, I think as Commissioner, Commissioner points out, I mean, the very fact that they put it in cups doesn't speak well, but, you know, that's why you have a situation like this, is how do you address it going forward, and how you address it is simply stop the service a whole lot earlier.
Okay. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $700.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, the recommended fine is approved. Calling agenda item number 10, Choga Jip.
Again, Keith Kyu, good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the commission, Keith Kyu for the licensee. To my far right is Jang Soon Lim, and again, this is for penalty phase only.
Ms. Nesty?
Yes, again, this is for liquor being open and readily consumable at approximately 3:10 a.m. This is again a first violation. The recommended fine is $1,200.
And I want to be perfectly honest, the reason why the recommended fine is so high because this, the investigators came in at 3:10 a.m. Just so you know, I'm going to be perfectly honest about that. Obviously, there was service after 2:00. It was after this violation that they got it that I had a very strong meeting with my clients, so, and they adopted the changes, and this occurred back on February 16, 2019. And they adopted the changes, and this occurred back on February 16, 2019.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,200.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 10, the recommended fine is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda, calling agenda item number 11. Study Hall Sports Bar and Grill.
Catherine Nesti, Deputy Corporation Counsel. I spoke with Mr. Kenneth Hu, who was just retained by the licensee on this matter on Tuesday. He had requested a continuance of these matters. They are agenda items numbers 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. The request was to continue to August 13, 2020, and I have no objection.
Commissioner?
Motion to continue agenda item 11 to August 13, 2020.
Second.
Can we do all forward in one motion?
Sure.
Yeah?
I'll revise. Sure. I'll revise my motion. Motion to continue agenda items 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 inclusive August 13.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda items number 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 inclusive are continued to August 13?
Yes, sir.
2020.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling agenda item number 16, liquor administrator. Do we have any administrative matters, Mr. Rye?
Just a previously circulated weekly report is all we have. I don't think there's anything in addition to that.
Yes, very good. Thank you. Meaning, Mr. John?